So this is the Town of Nottingham's Planning Board meeting for March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two. I'm gonna go around the room and have everybody introduce themselves, starting on my right.
I'm Sandra, I'm the Uli's boarding alternate.
I'm Buzz Davies, ultimate.
Gary Anderson.
Ian McKinnon.
Edward Veal.
Susan Voney.
Sheriff Sandra.
Charlie Nudson.
Larry.
Alright, and for the record, Mr. Davies and Ms. Jones will be participating tonight, but not voting as alternates. And we do not have a select board ex officio at the moment, so. We have a couple of items on the agenda. What I'll do is I'll take the second one first. We had a, I'm sorry, first, right in order. Case number twenty-two dash zero zero two dash S U B. This is a continued case application from Concrete Products London area requesting to create a four lot subdivision. Property located at one hundred Smoke Street in Nottingham, New Hampshire and identified as map lot, map eleven, lot three. We did have a request from the applicant to move the case to our first meeting in April. So at this time, a motion as such would, would be warranted.
Chair, I move that we continue case number twenty-two dash zero zero two dash S U B to April thirteenth at seven P M.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries six zero. Ian used the second of that, right? Okay, next item on the agenda is case number twenty-two dash zero zero three dash D R. It's an application for a design review from Berry Surveying and Engineering on behalf of James and Linda Fernal requesting to create a two lot subdivision with a private road. Property located at fifty-four Deerfield Road Nottingham, identified as map fifty-two, lot four dash two. Mr. Berry here.
It's this map.
If you could just give us a quick summary and then.
So again, this, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Christopher Berry, I'm with Berry Surveying and Engineering, representing that. The applicant's own a pretty substantial piece of property between Deerfield Road and Petacola Lake. Much of the abutting land was formerly owned by the same landowners and has gone into conservation. And the owners currently have an existing house structures off a long drive going down to, not the shore line, but against Petacola Lake closer to the lake than than not. And they're currently in the process of doing some estate planning of this piece of property. Joe and his wife are here this evening. The general plan has been to subdivide the property for family use to allow Joe and Dawn to build a second home on the property. Again, closer to Petacola Lake and Deerfield Road, but not subdivide the property in its totality, given, given the nature of it and the, and the family history of it. And so they asked that I review the, the regulations to determine the best way to do this. It is a unique piece of property in that it does have ample frontage, it has more than ample frontage. However, most of that, if not all of that frontage is largely open swamp, not just wetlands, but open valuable swamp land. As you drive by, there's bars that you can see. It's also, as you can see from the, the plan that we prepared or sketch that we prepared, I don't even wanna color the plan. There's a little piece of property that's taken out of the frontage of that that is actually owned by people across Deerfield Road. So the frontage is not even contiguous in that area. So in our review of the regulations, we found that subdivision regulation fifteen point four allows for the creation of private roads for the purposes of creating small subdivisions. And so the intent here is to create a proper right of way, it would likely be much larger than a proper right of way. Around the northern portion or northwestern portion of the property to encompass the existing driveway. The existing driveway is very substantial in size and width. Further assessment is needed of that for the use of a private roadway, but the intent would be to utilize that driveway and potentially increase it as may be needed. To establish a roadway that is likely sixty, seventy-five feet in width, two thousand feet long down to a proposed cul-de-sac. And then create a forming lot around the existing structure. And then the remaining land would be owned by Dawn and Joe for the construction of their home over there. That's, that's the general scope of the plan. We understand that, you know, much more details would be required, but wanted to sort of run this designer view by you. Given that regulation, I know there's a lot of discussion about private roads in town. I don't have all the details of those private roads, but it seemed that your regulations would allow us to do this to this point.
Thank you. Given that, open up to the, the board for questions or discussion.
Can we provide a right of way, or a, a simple right of way rather than like a normal private road in a subdivision which is built up to conspect?
So it would be, it would be both. We would provide a right of way around the existing infrastructure. And where appropriate, we would enhance the roadway to meet, I don't wanna say all of the specifications, but we would, we would meet as many of them as we deem appropriate and the board deemed appropriate. And develop, we would have to develop an actual roadway to meet life safety standards. Additionally, I just wanna point out, when up, the, the existing road that's there isn't a standard twelve foot wide driveway. It is, it is a substantial roadway.
Probably wider than some of the other dirt roads in town.
It's wider than Stevens Road. So when I say that there would need to be improvements, you know, we would have to go out and do cross sections of the entire roadway, determine where it may or may not be deficient. And we would need to talk about, you know, what, if any, enhancements would need to take place for them to meet as many of the subdivision regulations for roadway standards as planned.
And when you, when you mentioned section fifteen point four, was there something specifically that you were think, that you were referencing that you believe that allows for private roads to serve less than three lots? Cause generally, my understanding is generally we consider it to be a shared driveway if it's two lots or less, or two, obviously not less, cause it's, but a shared driveway for two lots. And once you get to three and above, then it automatically becomes a road.
So I got hung up with the front, the term frontage and frontage requirement.
Yeah.
I don't believe your regulations, and correct me if I'm wrong, cause it would certainly make this a lot easier for us, but I don't believe your regulations allow for us to create a shared driveway that we would then put frontage on.
Right.
This front, this private road section seemed to best fit what they were attempting to do.
Yeah, cause just even looking at, reading like the waiver requirements, the, the waiver allowances in that.
Right.
Section, you know, it allows us to waive, waive any of the standards for road construction for three or more lots, but it doesn't say that we can, you know, waive it for fewer lots, so. That's something we would have to look at a little bit more depth.
Does the existing John and Linda property, does that have frontage anywhere after this happens, or how, what, I don't understand the configuration of that.
So that lot would actually have frontage on the new private road.
I would have thought.
I mean, the other lot would also have copious frontage on the same private road, but would also have compliant frontage.
The, the old, the existing frontage for John and Linda is back up on the main road.
That's right.
And so the new subdivision takes that frontage on the main road away. And then they would have frontage on the new shared road.
So I'm, all I see here is what's marked as driveway. And so is that what you're, you're considering the new road to be, the, the area that you're talking about?
Right, so we, you know, an average roadway width is fifty, sixty feet. It would have to be, because of the placement of that driveway in relation to boundary line, that right way would have to increase uniformly to make it all fit within that.
You're just gonna hold the center line, offset?
Nope, I would hold the northwesterly boundary line and create, it might be a really wide right of way. Because if we, if we offset the center line, then we'd have this weird strip on the north side.
Yeah, looks like you have, you know, just eyeballing it, it was over a hundred feet, that, that strip.
That's right.
Do you have a feel for, for the buildable area at this point? Because I see there also a town beach kind of adjacent to that. I'm just curious how that might be affected or not.
So your question is feel for where the buildable area might be?
Yeah.
It would be where the sort of ninety degree bend shows for the tie lines along the water. It would be approximately in that area.
Mr. Berry, do you have a feeling for how long this private road will, will be ending in a cul-de-sac?
So it's, it's designed to end at two thousand feet. It's shown as two thousand feet, that's correct. Which the subdivision regulations permit by permission from the public.
And I have another thought, question. You had made a comment about conservation land?
Yes.
Were you alluding to the Frederick and Helen land, which is on the other side of the driveway, not Linda and, and Jim's?
Uh, yes, I apologize, yeah. I'm not from here, so Fernal's a Fernal of mine.
Well, I am, so.
So when you say, I'm sorry, so when you're saying the, the likely buildable area is gonna be the area, kinda on the plan versus Petacola Lake, that square, that, that right, that, that corner?
Yes.
Yeah. Somewhere in this area. So then you'd be looking at somewhere, if you add the driveway length, so that the, the access to the, any proposed lot would be realistically twenty-five hundred to twenty, let's say twenty-five hundred feet to the, to the road?
Yes, yes. So that's why I, I note in my brief narrative that regardless of what we call this private road, driveway, it has to meet life safety standards. Which means that it has to be at least twenty feet long. Cause it's well over the line for life safety requirement.
Yeah, I'm guessing based on the length for either situation, you know, I'm sure that, I don't wanna speak for the, the, the fire chief, but I'm sure they're gonna push hard for, you know, sprinkler systems and things like that, just cause it is so far from any kind of sister and, and thing of that nature, but that would be obviously something.
We're not too far from the dry hydrant, right?
The dry hydrant's there, but it.
Dry hydrant's pretty close to.
Driving line's probably thirty-five hundred feet.
Yeah.
Right, right down by the river?
Yeah, the dry hydrant there. And I assume, I can't remember from your narrative, is your intent to look at that cul-de-sac area and determine if you guys, say it's determined that the, you're gonna keep the road in its existing condition. Is the intent to potentially provide more of a turnaround?
Yes.
Even if it's, you know, whatever determines for the, a truck essentially?
Well, again, you have to meet the life safety requirement, so they're probably not excited about it, but they would need a turnaround of some kind to.
Some fashion, yeah.
Some fashion, right. So that may be, I don't know if hammerheads have been used here in the past, but that's also something that we could look at.
Well, along with that too, if it's considered called a private road, so a lot of times there's a, a maintenance.
Agreement.
Agreement that's put into the.
Mr. Berry, but you also passed an ordinance on this month for a ten foot setback from, on boundary lines. So do you anticipate that the driveway will need to be upgraded at any point, cause it's too close to the others?
Nope, no, we're well beyond the ten feet, and I would just point out that that seemed to be limited to single family home driveways, if I'm not mistaken.
Cause this driveway, but in this proposal, that driveway would actually become a road. So that would, and that's another topic of discussion that we brought up, this road setbacks.
This becomes a road, doesn't that make the big lot subdivitable?
Well, I would envision, the short answer is yes, but I would envision that there needs to be, as part of this process, there needs to be a discussion as to what the applicants intend to do versus what the construction standard is. And if anything changes in the future, then the construction standard would also be anticipated to change.
And that's, you beat me to that, and that's actually part of fifteen point four subsection five. Essentially no, you know, whatever we approve for the residential unit is part of this. And that was my question before I dove into it was, in our regulation, we actually say, any subdivision road that has had construction standards waived by the planning board at any time may not be used as access for any additional residential units. Until such road has been reconstructed to comply with the then applicable. So it would essentially, if they did propose a subdivision, we as a board could then determine, does it need to be paved per se if we decide to waive any ordinance? So they can't increase the number of residential units on that, from what we approved. So in this case, it would be, I guess, in this current scheme, it'd be like two.
Though it's approved as a private road.
And that's, that's, it would be proved as a private road too, so that, and that's why calling it a private road, that's what places that stipulation on it.
Okay.
But if it was being proposed as a town road.
And any town, any private road that needs to be, gets approved, needs to come to town meeting and come to town delivered session and all of those things get discussed about it before it ever gets there. And surely someone would say, hey, that doesn't meet the subdivision regulations.
Yeah, and that was another thought of mine, is if, I know there is the requirement there for the road improvements, if you add addition units, was like, technically is there a loophole there where it could be petitioned for a town road once it is wide enough to count as a right of way? I'm not really sure.
Well, it specifically says that it cannot unless it meets the.
The town.
The town standards.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Well, I'm saying, you can petition for anything, but then, then, then you can come up and say, no, that's not, that's, that's not how it is.
And that's the thing, I think that's the practice, but I think we've seen some roads, you can, like you said, petition for anything. So it could.
Several of the petitions that went through this year don't, don't hold legal water, but they pass.
Yeah.
They could request it to become an emergency lane though.
Correct, yeah.
And, and that just goes before the Board of Syllocman.
Yeah, but I, I think that subsection five under fifteen point four essentially, what they're proposing protects us if we do decide to waive some portion of the regulation.
Yeah, I think, I'm, I'm still just stuck on, you know, my understanding of our zoning regulations or subdivision regulations on, it's a, it's a shared driveway, if it's two lots. Three lots or more is when we started talking about it being any type of roadway. And again, even like our, our current language in the subdivision regulations kinda support that where we allow waivers for three lots or more, but we don't even say anything less than that.
I mean, is that, is that to say you want us to create another lot then? I mean, that seems kinda gratuitous.
Well, I think there's another option, so if you maintain two hundred feet of frontage on, on Deerfield Road for the existing lot and, and did a shared driveway, you'd probably have to go to zoning for the fact that it's not gonna be on the property line. But since it's already existing, that, I would think that would be a helpful argument. You know, I would, I would foresee that being a kinda more direct route than, than trying to call us a private road when it's only two lots.
So there is not contiguous frontage from a lot corner to the, the little square that's taken out of the front?
Yeah.
There's not two hundred feet of contiguous frontage? So that's, that's the issue that we're running up against.
Do you know what that amount is, is it like?
I don't have that right off the top of my head.
I mean, the subsection one two, I've been trying to read this a couple of different times to understand, is that we say, private roads servicing three or more lots or units shall conform to the standards of this article. So it's saying, private roads, three or more lots must comply with X, but it doesn't explicitly say that you can't have a private road.
For two lots.
For the purpose of two lots.
It doesn't have to comply with that regulation?
I think it's good practice that it would, but it's just, it's, it's just the way that it's written, they just happen to say if it's three or more, it has to comply with this. But I don't, I haven't found anything in the regulation yet that says you can't do a private road for two lots, but. That's the point, I think, I don't know if it's ever been contemplated, because generally if you do two lots, it's, it's not for the purpose of getting twenty-five hundred feet through a piece of property, so it's a little unique.
And it's typically not around existing infrastructure. You wouldn't build a, you wouldn't build a half a mile driveway today, right?
Yeah, that's not affordable.
But it's there today.
Yeah.
Oh, would you even wanna share a driveway for half a mile?
That's up to the people living on the shared driveway.
That's a good maintenance agreement right there.
Yeah, I think that's gonna, you know, things that take a little more digging on our part and, on that part to just, to see, cause again, in the past, we've always treated it. My knowledge, you know, those, those two ways, you know, we looked at it as cut and dry as.
Actually, well technically isn't a three lot, because it's a private road, that that right of way would remain in private ownership?
That's one I wanna look at.
I mean, that's the way, that's the way a lot of times, a lot, the, like the homeowners association would essentially oversee the maintenance within that right of way, but the right of way is a piece of property.
That's not a buildable lot for subdivision purposes, it's not, still because they're just two lot.
You know, another thought that comes to my mind is the little shed that's across from the old Gitzveren house. Sits on no more land than it is itself, but it's just an old thing. Might be purchasable, with the only event that they.
They tried.
We've tried.
Oh, we never mind. With the Z B A.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, that's what we're trying to avoid. You know, if in the event the planning board doesn't feel that this regulation is applicable, then we certainly have special conditions of the land that warrant a non-necessary hardship. But if this regulation is applicable, then we don't. Because this is technically another avenue, and therefore a variance may or may not be granted by the, the zone, the purpose. I mean, there, there is one other access point, which is the town beach road, which is actually owned by us. But we kinda figured that would cause part, conflict then.
Can you get across?
That's why I brought that up.
Would you have to cross a wetland or the stream there though, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think, obviously with all that, I mean, that would, cause of the crossings, we'd have to go to the zoning anyway too, for, for, for the wetlands. You know, so I, I mean, I think.
For the can of worms.
For, for the plan, you know, obviously, I see why it would make sense to utilize the existing infrastructure to make a single house lot. Just trying to see where in our, our regulations that we can kinda, you know, to guide it. And again, my interpretation of it, and without getting into it some more, would be that this is a shared driveway, it's not a, it's not a private road based on the number of lots.
So I guess with that said, Mr. Chair, I mean, this is a subdivision regulations, the board subdivision regulation, the board could contemplate a waiver, if we're stuck on the three or more. Planning board could contemplate a waiver to allow to, or less than to, phrase.
Yeah.
I think that's possible, also that the selectmen are gonna come into play here as far as a liability waiver being on a private road.
Yeah, we just have to see which sections potentially, if that was the case, you know, would require a waiver, is it just fifteen point four, is there another section?
Where in the property, generally I'm putting the building square.
I sure I can describe it for you.
Yeah, I didn't. Oh, okay, so it would be really way down there next to, next to the other house.
Common driveways in zoning, correct?
So we're gonna make reference.
Yeah, and I feel like we, you remember this year when we updated, added the driveway setback, I felt like we were talking about adding definitions too for, or I know at the same time, it's not gonna be in the, the current ones I have.
The two that were posted on the, the right setbacks. I think there was some.
I think we, I think we defined driveway finally. I think we finally defined driveway, cause there was, it wasn't in there, I'm trying to.
I remember seeing it up on that screen from somebody's computer, so.
So that may come into play too. Kevin, do you have that by any chance?
I'll, I'll look it up right now, I'm sure I have it somewhere.
And obviously shoreline would come into this, I'm sure you're aware of that.
Lot four dash three, a lot of record, and it is, how old is it?
Four dash three is a lot of record. I don't, I don't have the age of it off the top.
Because if it's old enough, you could treat this as a back lot subdivision. Then we wouldn't have to worry about it being divided again, and we wouldn't have to worry about the shared driveway.
Yeah, Mr. Berry, so I'm sorry, you have, the current house for, for Jim and Linda Fernal is located, you're showing his map, is lot four dash two, but then you're showing lot four dash three. Is that, is that the proposed number, or is that actually?
Uh, yeah, that's, yeah, the proposed number.
Okay, so the.
The tax map is.
So this, this, this map currently is four dash two, the whole, hundred and seventeen acres, yeah.
Yeah, four dash two, I, I just kept the tax map and lot number with the house, because that's where the assessing record stay.
Mr. Davies does bring up a good example of, but I, I think there's parts of that that it doesn't qualify for, given the total frontage of the lot?
There's also the, the simplicity of not subdividing in the future.
Yeah.
We, we're not.
That's, it's only one, I believe it's only one of the lots that requires that, that.
No, I think it puts, I believe it puts both lots now in, you cannot further subdivide either parcel. It's a page thirty-five in zoning.
The back lot shall, shall be deeded as unsubdivitable. So the back lot, so if Jim and Linda's, Fernal's property became the back lot.
Yeah.
It would, that potentially.
So in that, in that instance, then we would only need to go to the Z B A for the driveway not being over the front.
You'd have to go to the Z B A for him, sorry.
Well, the still, the intent is to.
Oh, that, it wouldn't be.
Share the driveway, and it's not at the.
On the lot line.
Not on the lot line, so maybe I could draw it on the lot line.
The portion of your frontage that is, I guess, would be east of the garage lot, and that's obviously pretty expansive, right? We also have in here that if, if the frontage lot, the, this has front grade of two hundred feet, you cannot qualify for a back lot.
Yeah. Uh, I found this definition.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
So you're talking about the new definition, but it distinguishes between driveway and common driveway. And so driveway, a travelway which accommodates vehicular, pedestrian circulation between a street and one adjoining lot. Common driveway, a travelway which accommodates vehicular and pedestrian circulation between a street and multiple adjoining lots.
So common driveway is a legal thing in that town?
Yep, that's in zoning, sure you drive it.
A legal thing now is how it is.
So interestingly, that definition was changed to say.
Multiple, just. Says multiple instead of.
It says multiple, right, but your subdivision regulations and prior in those definitions, it says there's a maximum.
Yeah, the zoning says.
Right.
Two. Shared driveways, required driveway may be either a single or common shared driveway serving no more than two residences.
And I mean, that's the definition.
Yeah, I mean, it kinda goes.
It shows not to regulate through the definition.
Yeah.
Because the common driveway in the body of it says two, so.
I see.
So it works, the, the common driveway piece works for this, cause it is four and two?
Well, then it goes back to frontage. There's still a frontage issue.
Correct.
But that could be resolved by zoning board adjustment.
Theory.
It could also be solved by a waiver of plan.
Essentially, the proposal, the private road absolves any frontage issues for either lot. That's, I think, yeah, I think that's why they chose this avenue.
So we can approve this by waiving some of the regulations for the private. So we can approve this by waiving some of the regulations for the private road. Which seems to be the easier thing to do.
It's the easier thing for the applicant, for sure.
And for us, too. For the whole process, I guess, easier thing for the whole process.
Maybe somebody could argue that sending them to ZBA so we don't have to deal with it is the easier process, but I think, yeah.
Ouch.
No, but that's, I mean, in theory, you could look at it like that, but yes, we have the capa, the ordinance gives us the capability to.
That's, that's what I mean, we're not doing something strange, we have the, we have the capability and the ordinance to do it, and I guess I look at, the simplest way is, is not involving two different boards.
Well, I think the thing here, this is a design review, right?
Yeah, we're not going.
What we've discussed is a couple of options that the applicant can then leave with and decide and come back, how they want to proceed. Do they want to treat this as, you know, a, a common driveway, do they want to continue in the way that they're, they're asking for, ask for a waiver? So, so there's a couple of different options that we've discussed, I, I don't think it's our, I don't, I don't think it's our role in this, this
We can't get into details.
To say, this is the way that you should do it, we're discussing the, kind of where, you know.
Possibilities.
The possibilities and the options.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I think Mr. Berry's already stated that they have, even with the current proposal, there's a lot of work they have to do to determine specifically, there's quite a few regulations to figure out, weed through the road standards and figure out what complies, what doesn't comply.
Yeah, and I'd have to even look to see if, if this, if this proposal would work and still not require a ZBA relief, because it, I would think that, that normally you would still have to have two hundred feet of frontage for a private, you know, for a subdivision for a private road.
Which.
But I'd have to dig into where that might be, if, if that's included.
Well, we do have frontage on the private road, that was your.
Right, but the, but the curb cut's not gonna be coming in from where, from where the frontage exists.
If it became a private road, right, but it isn't currently a private road.
So, the distinction here is, if, let's, let's just take this to the extreme. These guys want to build X number of houses on a cul-de-sac, it's two thousand feet long. We could develop a roadway the exact same way that we're showing it now, develop an, an actual town road down the center of it, and subdivide it off in the exact same geometry that we're doing it, that's not what the applicants want to do. They want to consider this a private road, so the town doesn't have to make that. But, so that they don't have to construct it to a paved highway standard essentially, and we want to provide two hundred feet of frontage on the private road for Farnold's house, the larger piece of property would have, would conform in every way without the private road, it has frontage on, um, it's frontage on Deerfield Road, it has available area, it's of the ample size, uh, I think. This, this, so this is why we chose to go ahead what we did, I think the one thing that, the one hangup is that your private road standards say three or more.
Yeah, I think it's creative, and obviously, you know, we don't have a lot of parcels of this size or, you know, geometry in, in town. You know, but normally for, for the subdivisions, you know, the two hundred feet of frontage requirement is where the curb cut has to be within that area too, so if you don't have two hundred feet of frontage in that section, then, you know, that's where I'm saying, I'd have to go back through and, and go, go through the, the items again to see where that picks up.
Are you speaking about like this remainder lot?
No, it's in the, the original, the natural, initial frontage that the current lot has, the current, where the current driveway is.
I get you. Is under two hundred.
Right, Mr. Berry's already explained that that's not actually two hundred feet between that corner and where that, uh, structure is that belongs to the lot across the street.
Right, it currently exists as an existing, I guess, non-conforming in that sense.
Only, only because the driveway comes off from a non-contiguous portion of the frontage?
In theory, I think what he's saying is if this is a fresh, if this is a new lot.
Yep.
That, that, you, you might not be able to pull your driveway from.
I think they gave some of their frontage in order for their conservation, if I remember.
This adjacent, yeah.
Oh, so it ranked.
Put that in, so they actually gave up some of their frontage to the conservation.
But I guess too, if, if they continue with this, the current proposal, that negates the issue, correct? Because we're essentially creating, it creates the frontage for all. Again, it's their choice to continue with whichever avenue, but.
Yeah, and even like our, in, in the subdivision regs, our, our, the table one, Town and Oningham Road and driveway design construction standards, you know, design standards, drive, residential driveway, number of dwellings up to two, then you have local street, and, you know, what we classify above that. So I think there's a few areas we'd have to, there's a few sections that we'd have to kind of go through and see if there's a way to get there from here with the middle, you know, potentially without, uh, either resulting in fewer requests, or no request to ZBA, or, you know, to, to be able to accomplish what you're looking for. You know, and meeting our, our regulations.
Is there one thing in particular right now that you think automatically sends them to the ZBA, or just you're not sure?
Um, well, I'd have to go through and just see what we have for waiver requirements, we usually spell out what we can waive and, and what those are. So I'd have to go through that and double check and see what, if we could waive some requirements in there, or if, or if it kicks it to zoning. I agree, coming in off that existing town beach road, which doesn't have any structures off it, so obviously that'd be considered probably the driveway, wouldn't make any sense because of the, uh, obviously, the, quite a bit of wetlands crossings and such to get, to get there.
There's only one one crossing.
Is it, okay, I thought that.
The roads are already there.
Yeah, I thought that area to the side of that, uh, that roadway was, was pretty wet.
Well, the wind goose side of it, we all the road.
Yeah, oh, so, okay, you'd come in up then, there somewhere else.
The entire road, the entire town needs roading on our property.
Yeah.
So, that's why we're trying to do something on the other side to not cause conflict there.
Right, yeah. I think I'll see, no.
I mean, I think we have the ability, in terms of waiver of construction standard, it says we can waive all or part.
I agree with that.
I didn't hear the comment.
The, I mean, in terms of what we can waive, I mean, we.
You can waive theoretically with all of them.
Waive the entire thing if you wanted to, but. Again, that one's tricky though, it says, the road construction standards may be waived in whole or in part by the planning board for private roads servicing three or more lots. But then up above, it doesn't actually say that private roads have to be for three or more lots, so that's, uh, more confusing than anything. But again, that brings, it still keeps it with the planning board though, if, if anything.
So, we want to, before we went out and spent all these people's hard money on surveying and engineering and wetlands and everything else, we wanted to, because, because of the oddity of it, we wanted you to see it first, and I'm not hearing that this is a non-starter in this other section of these two other books, you can't do this, and this section probably should have been removed, you're just, now it was, and I just didn't read that, um, but also getting a sense that, though, getting a sense that there might be two routes, one going to the zoning board, but obviously, for disstated reasons, our preferred route is to stay with this board. And it has nothing to do with bouncing between boards, it has to do with, if there's a, if there's another mechanism in which you can achieve your goal, then asking for a variance is not statutorily the best way to approach a project, so that's why we're here.
Yep, I appreciate that.
Still have a strong feeling about getting a sense of the selectmen's point of view, especially being everything that's come up with private roads lately, so that might be beneficial.
Any other questions? I will, this is a public hearing, sorry, so I will, I will open the public hearing. If there's anybody from the public that would like to come up and speak, ask questions, either for or against, or just internal questions, this is a non-binding discussion tonight, is a design review. Anything we say here is, is non-binding between us and the applicant, and vice versa. I will close the public hearing on that. Does anybody else have any comments, questions? So, Mr. Berry, at this point, you know, we can either continue the design review, and if you want to have some extra time now, we kind of get a better sense of the plan and, and, you know, what you're looking to do, and obviously why, you know, with the frontage limits that they are, why you're trying to get there this way, or if you're, have a choice at this point.
Well, would be, would extending the design review provide us with any other information that we've received tonight?
Uh, the only thing I could think of, you know, for me personally, would, would be now I can understand the plan and, you know, a little bit more of the, the numbers involved and what's there, would be just to go back through and see if there is anything specifically that says no to this one, or yes to the seller, or says, yeah, this stuff has got to ZBA versus no, we can accomplish this.
Well, to Gary's point, we want to continue this until the, they've had a chance to meet with the board of selectmen. Seeing as our selectmen rep isn't here tonight to speak for them.
Yeah, and that would be the applicant's choice if they want, we, there's nothing, in our purview at this point, that could say you have to go see the select board, so if you're planning to go see them and you felt that their information may be helpful to you, yeah.
So, a document that I read this afternoon, on the town's website, talked about waivers and releases on private roads, and I think it implied that in the event that it's part of an approved subdivision, that those waivers and releases aren't required. So, it's unclear to me whether or not we actually have to go to the selectmen, but if we were to go to the selectmen, I would want to have a lot more information than I have here today, to talk intelligently about status.
You're saying, you said are, are, aren't, are not required?
That was my brief understanding of it.
I think that's because of fifteen point four, it kind of gets into, requires the establishing of a, some sort of deeded avenue from the beginning.
Yeah.
Which a lot of, I think, those ones that they did that for, they've just been there for decades.
Yeah.
And I think, I think including those anyway in a plan, especially where, if the majority of the road design standards are gonna be requested to be waived, you know, that would probably be something we would encourage to have on there anyhow, whether the town requires it at this point or not, because again, usually when we just approve a plan, it's a road that's to a certain standard, so.
Right, I would also envision some if-then statements for future owners to understand in the future, and we would, we would prepare, and in a project like this, we will prepare the documents ahead of time, with our interview sort of right out of the gate, oftentimes it's, yeah, we'll get you the real stuff as a condition of the room, but I think that's important in this case for this particular project to have that sort of set up.
Yeah, there's like two or three things that kind of reference, either on the plan, the D, there's multiple things there in a fifteen point.
There's, oh, exactly.
Yeah, see this note, see that note?
Okay, well then, I guess we would just ask that the board close the, uh, design review hearing, and we'll go to work and leave out to you shortly.
Motion?
Please.
I'll make a motion that we close the design review process for case number two-two dash zero-zero-three dash DR.
Second. That's a motion by Mr. McKinnon, a second by Mr. Anderson, do we have any further discussion? See none, all is in favor, please say aye.
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 All is opposed, motion carries six-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
But any remarks?
Next item on our agenda for tonight is a review of our rules, procedures, slash, and bylaws. The Land use court sent those out for us all revised, we had some edits from last year that went through, and it's a good practice for us to re-review these every single year, and make sure that we're adhering to them, refreshing them as needed, based on, uh, procedure and changes of the law, so.
Do you want me to project those?
Yeah, if you can, that'd be, I think that'd be helpful. So I'll, I'll come into doing that, did, did anybody have any things specifically wanted to discuss, or?
I, I did.
Me too.
If you want to jump to other businesses, is that what you're saying? Did you want to jump to other businesses, Ed, or?
Sure, sure, well, we'll take public comment, this is the time of night where we open the, the floor to the public for, for general questions, we can't respond to comments made about specific properties, projects, or applications, but again, we reserve this time every single, uh, uh, meeting to allow the, the public to come in and ask us questions, or, uh, be it planning board, related, anything.
Actually stay there so you can point.
I'll do the Venn away thing.
Yeah.
You want to, as I say, Blair, if you wanted to sit at the table, you sit up here too, you won't be in the way. So, I know, uh, Ms. Anderson had submitted some edits through, which are shown in red, I believe this is, are, are Ms. Anderson's edits, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, these were the twenty-twenty-one, uh, bylaws that we adopted last year, or twenty-twenty, and, um, with some additional edits.
You want to speak to it?
Sure.
Yeah, so the first, the first one there, the general quote, I just double-checked on the H, the link that was there, that, that's no longer the link, so I just put in the, the new link, so that's what that is there for. You want to keep going?
If there's substantive things I can, I know we can all kind of, if everybody can see the, the items on there, if anyone has questions, or.
Yeah, so what I could probably do is just share that I went through every RSA to make sure that the RSAs were correct, um, and, um, so I think, uh, I think those were all correct unless I otherwise noted it, and most of the stuff that I did was just kind of, um, uh, you know, edits, so just, uh, yeah, just, you know, member of the select board, not, um, selectmen, um, then if you go down, so on the RSA, uh, the section four, the language of the RSA, this now reflects the new language of the RSA, um, and guides to, um, the, how many members can be, so, um, it, it, it states the conservation commission, local governing board, or land use board as defined, so I just, uh, modeled the language in the RSA on that one. In the section six, we just, I just wanted to keep with the, the same, we, we always start with the per RSA, so just, just for consistency. Uh, again, it's just changing select board, um, the, uh, so on section, uh, section one, um, I just added for a little bit more clarification as far as the language that's in the RSA, relating to that, um, that every planning board shall from time to time update and amend the adopted master plan, blah, 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 with funds appropriated for that purpose by the local legislative body. Um, and that was like really, really reflective of what we have had challenges with in the past in some cases, so just wanting to get that into the bylaws.
So, if, for that RSA, is it saying that you'd basically have to create a line item, budget line item, to say, update master plan, as opposed to just planning board?
No, it doesn't say that, it just says that there's a funds that are appropriated for that, yeah. Uh, so on this RSA, again, just reflecting the RSA, um, language, um, as far as, it, it's no longer six months, it's the first year now in the RSA, and then changing the, uh, off. six months, it's the first year now in the RSA, and then changing the Office of Strategic Initiatives to what it is now called, which is also in the RSA.
For that section there, I thought it'd be good to change may, so the planning board may complete, should, so it's just not a shall, but it's a little bit strongly, more strongly suggestive.
Second line, far right.
Yeah.
The may.
It's a shall.
Should.
Should.
Should, sorry.
Yeah, so it's not, should's still not a requirement, but it's a little bit kind of a stronger suggestion than may.
Charlie, can I interrupt a second?
Yeah.
In the opening paragraph on page one, did you change Office of Strategic Initiatives to Planning and Development as well?
And I thought it still was the OSI.
No, it's different. No, that's, this is what it is now.
Yeah.
Planning and Development.
Yeah, I, I have it, I have it marked up. I don't know if I did it in the document.
It's in a couple places.
Yeah.
It's in the opening paragraph, and it's in Article Two, Section Three as well.
You'd have to scroll up.
Sure, you sure OSI isn't a part of development?
No.
No, I know. If you look, because our whole book.
Oh, that's, I know.
Our whole books have OSI.
Yeah.
They just probably haven't updated the website.
And then there's a whole section of it.
Oh, I don't know. I didn't look at the website.
I was on the website quite a bit, and it's totally fine.
Hopefully they did change it, because strategic initiatives is such a vague term, it sounds like some vague company name.
Yeah. Well, part of me was thinking like that we just footnote it, right? If they're going to change it every two years, we just footnote it, or whatever, whatever the state wants to call it, kind of thing, but.
And let's actually, I guess we'll, we'll just back up. We'll tackle it section by section if that's okay.
Yeah.
Kevin, do you mind just going back to the beginning?
Yeah, sure, sure, sure.
So, one suggestion I had, possibly for the whole thing, is to just renumber. So, I think Article One should be actually the beginning, and we would call it, you know, authority, like we do for our zoning regs, our subdivision regs, and we would add a little bit of language. I got this from the example version online, which is adding the verbiage, these rules or procedures are adopted under the authority of New Hampshire, or via statutes annotated 676-1, which we don't reference anywhere else, but that's actually what, so we would just add authority at, at the end of, at the end of it, but maybe make Article One that section, call it authority.
So, this Article One? Did I get, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so you just create Article One, authority, and then that paragraph would be, you know, section one.
This would be Article One, right here.
That'd be, yeah, section one of Article One, yeah.
It says Article One, and there's, that becomes section.
Section one, yeah, so the heading of this area would be Article One.
So, that's section one, then every proceeding would be section two, definitely one more than what it is.
Yeah. That may, and that's just a suggestion, but again, just have it kind of flow, so we're keeping everything. And then also add, under, under, under the actual section one, that's in Article One, add per RSA 673-2. Yeah, well, I think, I'm sorry, I think that would still be the document of the title, so.
So, you're saying that bylaws and rules, they should say Article One, is titled bylaws and rules?
Or we would just title it authority, so the actual, this actual document is titled bylaws and rules, so it's planning board, New Hampshire, bylaws and rules, procedure for transactional business, then Article One, authority. Or some, something like that. You know, ways you can overcomplicate a process, right?
Section one. Is that all right?
But. Get rid of the top Article One, right? Get rid of that, but then, Ed, you're saying where he just put Article One in blue, that should, instead of members and vacancies, say authority?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying? Yeah, that makes sense.
So, was it members?
Instead of members and vacancies in this place, put just authority.
Just authority?
Yeah, because it kind of goes into how we were able to do it.
Yeah, so like zoning warrants right now, we call Article One preamble, and it has two sections, authority and purpose, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
I think.
Yep.
Yeah, and we need to just change the offices of strategic initiatives over to the... Whatever they call it now.
Planning and Development.
Planning and Development.
But also in another section in the, in the document two.
Yeah.
So, it's New Hampshire, Planning and Development?
Yeah.
Office of.
It's Office of. So, strategic.
Office of Planning and Development.
Got it.
So, that would be throughout, you know, wherever you find that, you can just find or replace. Nothing, I have a whole room full of people watching you type.
And I'm not really that good at it.
And then, so Article One after that, so you just renumber it throughout after this, but we can do that after.
So, this is Article Two?
Correct, so it's the renumber.
And then, after section one, at the end of that, or at the beginning, it would be per RSA 673-2.
Right here?
Yeah.
RSA, one more time.
673 colon two. And then to the last sentence of that, that's already been kind of amended, I had some slightly different language, which I'll just read and.
Am I, am I getting rid of something here?
Not yet, I'll, I'll say it, and we can discuss, but the select board shall choose one select board member or administrative official of the town as an ex-official member. That's the, I believe, the language of. The select board shall choose one select board member or administrative official of the town. As an ex-official member.
He's getting his groove now.
Yeah.
But I think that's better because then it doesn't restrict it to the select board, so if for whatever reason the select board doesn't, then they can, if the RSA allows that, then I think I would then take out the seventh member shall be the ex-official member, and just keep it what you just presented, Ed.
Or just period after ex-official, period, member, period.
Yeah.
And start, and just do a new sentence.
Yeah. One of the other.
So.
After remember that.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah.
Again, these are all just suggestions, so, you know, everybody, anybody can chime in and edit, see, don't like it?
No, I like that. So, in this scenario, Kevin, after the member in red.
This one?
That becomes a period, and then we're saying, then you can get rid of actually this, of the select board as chosen, and it'll roll right into the next. Yeah.
Yeah.
Says the same thing, but explains, yeah. Especially if it does allow an administrative official to step in.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so section two, section three, any, if there's any, everybody jump in as, as we get through them, otherwise we'll just count through them. Section four. I had a piece of that. So, I don't know if we want to include this language, so anytime we say members in here, appointed elected members, it's including alternates. A member is an alternate as well, and alternates are members, I mean, but if we wanted to add clarifying language, we could state that here, you would say, including alternates, so appointed elected members of the planning board, appointed slash elected members, including alternates of the planning board, may also serve. So, it's just, my thought on that is, as we're going through, is if we get questions on procedure, oh, can we do this, can we do not do that, if it's clearly stated, does it make it easier without having to go back through and review it?
Throw a comma there where your cursor is currently, and you'll have to do one after members, too.
Yeah.
No, I think it's worthwhile to add that clarification.
Just there?
Yeah. Section five, we didn't have any changes. Section six, it was just the RSA language. Section seven, on here, I thought it might make sense to change planning board office to land use office.
Oh, yeah.
And then similarly, before I forget, throughout the document, anywhere you see, whoever the former title was on here, you know, you'd be changing it to your correct title, so Lanes clerk instead of.
Where, what's from Article Four and then land use, is that the title?
No, it's not, not, not in this section here, but I'm saying, any further on through the document, you'll start seeing your title, which I don't think it's accurate in here.
Right there, land use administrative assistant.
Right.
Oh, I see.
It's actually land use clerk, correct?
My knowledge, your current title is land use clerk, unless it's changed, so anywhere you see that, you'd be correcting it, you don't have to do that now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll go back.
Uh, section eight, section nine, the only change was selectmen to select board. Section ten.
Stop, stop.
Oh, yeah.
Section nine, I went through in gender nude, made some of these terms gender neutral, so in section nine where it says himself dash herself, the corrected link all these days is themselves, or their. And even though these are singular, their in this, in this, in this area is also singular. Whatever a regular member disqualifies themselves.
Yep.
And there's several places where I, I dropped those out and put gender neutral.
I think that makes sense, anywhere you see himself, herself, just make themselves, it's, I think it's just easier.
Yeah.
I can put the other ones out now if that makes it easier, or you just want to go through line by line?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. I can, I'll.
I'll keep a note of, like, these.
In the form, all right. You start with the second place.
So, anywhere that says himself, herself, change to themselves.
Yes, yes.
No, themselves.
His, her becomes their, and that's an article, new Article Four, Section Four, Section Five, his, her becomes their.
So, his, her becomes their.
Yeah. And that's singular, that's a singular use.
Where did you see that one?
On the old Article Three, which is now become Article Four.
Okay, we have a last one yet?
Yeah, further down.
Okay, we'll get to it.
Uh, so, section nine, section ten, instead of board members, change it to board chair and vice chair was my suggestion.
Say that again, Ken.
Well, this is only a suggestion, so right now, for section ten, it's talking about, if anybody that can't make it, you know, who do they notify? Right now, we have it, the land use clerk and, and all board members, basically, but I was going to change it to just board chair and vice chair. The reason for that is it avoids somebody kicking out an email to a quorum, you know,
Is it and vice chair, or and/or vice chair?
Could be both, just in case.
I want it, is and, yeah.
And then make it vice chair. In this care, in this case, it works, yeah.
Yeah, no, keep the gender out of it.
Oh, just the chair, no?
Chair, vice.
In this case, you can use that term, yeah.
Yeah.
Need to get rid of the first and and just put a comma.
All right, yeah.
Yeah. Be a broadcast email. I don't know if I've ever seen broadcast email.
Broadcast email?
Anywhere else except for these documents, but.
Yeah, I would take out broadcast, but.
I've never heard of that.
Just, yeah, yeah, email.
Eximally. Article two, which is now Article Three, planning board duties. Where are we at? That's Article two. Say, I left my printed copy at home and had all my markups on that. Planning board duties, duties and offices and. I think I was switching the sections, I'm sorry.
Turn to Article Two, yeah.
Yes, I know, I was thinking, as we get through it, I was thinking, grabbing this whole section, moving it after the next section, bringing it up for, for flow. We talked about members and their vacancies, I thought it'd make more sense to have the next section, officers and their duties.
Oh.
Be after that, then planning board duties, or election of officers, then planning board duties, so we get through the formation of it.
That makes sense, but let's not have him do it tonight.
Yeah, no, 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 so.
This is going to become, so we'll just need to go back and tell, and figure out what article that is. It's going to get moved down to like five or six.
Maybe five.
Five, all right, so I'll put it as five.
Yeah.
Send us, one of us the documents, we get a new color on there. I'll make sure I use like yellow or something, that's hard to see.
But do we want to just stay on this for this editing?
Yeah. Section three, we already did that, never mind. Does anybody else put that training on? Does anybody know? Should we have it as comparable?
I would say, because I was thinking the same thing, why do we have to do it through this? I, I get like they probably want to do it through the states so that you can stick into the RSA's, but there's additional training that you might want to take, right?
So, what I was suggesting there, Kevin, is the training shall be designed and furnished by the Office of Planning and Development, or, or comparable.
Uh.
Or comparable.
Right there. Yeah, so after or comparable organization?
Yeah.
I think they've done it every year, but some years they've, I think, pushed it, so.
That's a good point, I mean, even some of the regional planning commissions put on workshops, so.
Section four, five, section six.
So, you wanted this article to become arti, well, actually, wouldn't it?
We'd be, we'd be chunk later. So, Article Three.
I didn't do anything here, I figured Sue would work on this one.
Oh, this is.
I'm like, I'm not going to do this one, because Sue's going to come in with some stuff.
Well, I, you know.
I tried to find if there was any language, so what officer positions are, there really wasn't, and we talked about those three positions, tried to see if there was any language in the RSA about, you know, the chair, vice chair, when they're assuming duties, they can assign the duties to another person.
I couldn't find anything.
So, I don't think it prevents us from that. Blair, so we had a discussion, so basically, say the chair and the vice chair were out, and the next person up would be the secretary position, if that person, uncomfortable running the meeting, could, could we put language in our bylaws that allows them to basically push somebody into the chair position for the night?
I don't know.
Yeah. I'm into emailing it, too.
You know, a secretary, I'd really rather handle the duties of being the chairperson to somebody else.
Well, I think section six speaks to it.
It does.
Because the section six says in the absence of the three, then the, the planning board decides who.
Absent, but if I was here, I would not be absent.
Right, but I'm saying, it does allow the planning board to vote for someone else to be the chair, so if you modify what the secretary does, then we just take out in section six, the secretary, and ta-da.
Oh, yeah, that's a good point, you just remove the information.
You just clear, change the, change the responsibilities of the secretary in section five to be whatever you, it is, you know, taking minutes, you know, if the land, the land use clerk isn't here, or, you know, offside, and, you know, developing, you know, communication to the public, and just. and, you know, developing com, you know, communication to the public, just leave it at that.
That's a good point, 'cause under section six, it's nothing to say in the future that they couldn't run the meeting because then they're just thrown into the mix.
Right.
And just take out the word secretary in section six and that.
Correct, yeah.
So, take out secretary where it already exists in section six?
Correct.
Yeah, so you have to do, remove or. And then you have to replace the, just the comma between chairperson and vice chairperson in each of those locations with or, yeah, yeah, uh. It would be an or, because technically, they can, e, either of those positions can do it.
And then the first line, it's correct, strike secretary there too.
No, it'd be and.
Well.
In the absence of the chairperson and vice chair.
Well, what happens if the vice chair is not comfortable?
Oh, and, yeah, he was on it from line, is what you were saying.
Oh, yeah, up top. I see.
So, line one, in the absence of the chairperson and vice chairperson, and you get rid of.
Planning board.
Sec, and secretary.
I think where he just was, though, when they return, that is or, because in theory, so that, that, that second and there can be or, because now we're talking about them returning. Yeah, that can be or, 'cause they're returning.
Okay.
'Cause then either one of them can assume they were somewhat responsible.
Acting chairman.
Yes, that's correct. Love the little grammatical stuff.
And then, wait, don't go.
We gotta do something with five.
We're gonna change section five to what the responsibilities are of the secretary. Do you wanna take that, Sue? You want me to?
Secretary shall, shall perform such duties as required by the planning board. And then just kind of leave it nebulous.
Sure. Or just say such as?
Such as, uh, taking minutes in the absence of.
Land use clerk.
Land use clerk.
And then, don't you do, uh, don't you do the.
I don't, I don't write the newsletter anymore.
Oh, okay.
Like that.
Okay. Alrighty.
I think that works.
I didn't have any, I didn't have any further edits through this section.
Oh, did we go to section four?
I'm sorry, I just.
I'm sorry.
Article, Article Four.
I just wanted to make sure, okay, I just wanted to make sure that.
And then, Article Five.
Those are just RSA updates, or moving the RSA?
Are you at section four, where it says, in accordance with, change that to per? Ian?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Which one do you want?
I don't know. I can't see that, so.
We're on removal of members, Article Five, the original Article Five.
Did you need to go to four?
Was there something in rem, four?
I had markups on four. That are in there.
I did too.
In section, Article Four?
Yeah, which is the new five, which God only knows what it is now.
So, are, are, are. What's currently, what's currently Article Four, Election of Officers?
Okay.
Is there any other changes in that?
Section two, where it says candidates for any office receiving majority vote on the planning board shall be de, declared elected. The elected candidate shall take office immediately, but, yeah, I think you need to be sworn in by the town clerk in the term.
Shall be sworn in.
Yeah, I put that in.
Shall be declared elected, the elected candidate.
I'll be sworn in by the town clerk or other qualified person prior to taking off, after taking the oath, oath of office. The elected candidate shall take off, the, take office.
Yeah, I think, right, so that work, yeah, so the same thing, yeah, yeah.
There was something I saw. And then section nine, are we there yet?
No.
No, we're in five.
No, we're in Article, Article Five for removal of members. Which I think this is, this is the RSA language. Does any, any, anybody else have anything they'd like to add, or I'll get a little track for that. Article Six, uh, land use.
Now, call it clerk.
Yeah, clerk.
How about change that?
Yeah, so that'll just change it.
Section, I had a note on section eight. Uh, so, in, in the event of a vacancy of administrative assistant or Land Use Clerk position or temporarily leave absent of the current clerk, uh, Land Use Clerk, the planning board, I was gonna say, or town administrator shall designate? I don't know if they.
That's what happens, yeah.
Because realistically, that's what happens is, unless that violates any thing that I'm not aware of.
Yep. That works.
Section, Article, uh, Seven, Other Agents of the Planning Board. I did not have anything in this section, we didn't have any proposed edits. Article Eight, Committees. Um, the only thing I had, I don't know if we've gone on, put it in here, we don't mention the CIP Committee at all. So, it's, the CIP, in some ways, falls under the planning board, but then, I think in this town, it's, uh, created by the select board, but we, we do have a representative on it, so I think we don't capture that anyway, anywhere. Or we mentioned that we have SRPC representatives, but CIP is more, uh, governed by the RSA, I believe.
I thought there was a section where we talk about like other committees.
Yeah, I didn't know if we wanted to add, add the language in somewhere. So, maybe you say, the, the, shall be elected by the planning board in any such, uh, I don't have this article.
I think you almost wanna go to that after sooner.
Is there another section after this? No, there isn't.
My, my take on this section was that these are committees that the planning board formed on their own. Not committees that we assign members to participate in.
'Cause in theory, we could create subcommittees to, yeah, you can create subcommittees for really any topic if you want.
Yeah, I think it's.
Not CIP.
Say, subcommittees.
Well, where is the ordinance that counts for us participating in other committees, like the school facilities or the PPLP?
The CIP is RSA six seventy-four five, top of my head.
Is that the county four somewhere?
It, it's not that I, that I found. I just didn't find where necessarily we'd have, we'd wanna insert that.
It could be a section two of this.
I think it should be, because we do appoint people to those committees. Or, or to, to that committee or to some others that the town may have.
Or, or maybe under Planning Board Duties, maybe back it all the way up to that. I think maybe add a section six. You know, for RSA six seventy-four five, the planning board may or should or will, uh, appoint a member to serve as a, uh, representative on the CIP Committee.
So, which one?
I was saying, under current Article Two, Planning Board Duties, maybe we'd add a section seven, sorry.
Yeah, or six.
Six. And capture it there. So, we don't need to do that right now, but, so what I would envision that is, is per, per the RSA, the planning board may or should or shall, you know, appoint a, um.
Do you wanna send Kevin language on that?
Yeah.
Kevin's sitting there like, where do I put it?
I'll, I'll put this all together. I have a feeling I'm gonna be off on the articles.
Yep.
Because I think we jumped around a little bit on it, ah, and maybe I'll shoot it out, I don't know, just want me to shoot it out to everyone or just to, or?
You can shoot it to me and then I'll just say, yeah, that's what I thought, and then, then we kick it out to everybody and we can go, and we can adopt them at the next, uh, the next meeting.
Alright.
So, we don't have to add that, but again, I thought it, just, it's a placeholder, so we don't forget about it.
Right.
So, it just, is this section right here?
Yep.
Uh, new, new s, yeah, new section seven, here.
And then what is it, AKs?
CIP, just, you can just put, just, just put CIP and I'll give you some language.
But it could be committees and other agencies, so we could slide on staff and regional planning commission in two.
Yep.
So, committees and other agencies.
Right, because we, we could presenting one or members to something, I love the reasons, correct?
And then we do, here.
Alright.
I'll give you some verbiage on that one, Kevin.
We're out.
Any questions?
Alright, we're on Article, um, nine, meetings and hearings.
I didn't have anything, any changes here?
No.
Wait, so, I'm just, I'm reading that last sentence.
Says it in the RSA.
Okay, yeah, I was curious, I know we, we talked about that.
We talked about it, so, I stuck it in there.
And this is where, didn't we have a discussion about, can we provide the ability to just participate remotely? But there was, is this, that's the language that kinda speaks to it?
That's the language in the RSA.
I think Jen went to it, right? It was like technically the law says, you have to almost have an extenuating circumstance if you want, if you can't show up, okay.
Right, it's just captured in the language finally, and our, and I think, and obviously, and then if you read the RSA, it, it discusses, you know, the physical location requirement, the physical body, you know, quorum here.
Yep.
Unless there's an emergency declared, um, and a few other things. So, when you actually get into the RSA, that's referenced there, i, it goes into the, the step-by-step procedures.
Yeah, and I added, just because this came up as a question, we have to have for the RSA, at least one meeting. And then, but then I gave us the flexibility with the and/or.
Right.
Yep. Article ten, Conduct of Business.
But we add, what we, we now, like add public comment?
Yep.
Add updates from select boards down in board members?
Yeah, and I questioned why we, we have old business, new business correspondence, we just call it other business.
Yeah. Other business board updates, which we have reports.
That's a relic, you know, old business, new business.
Yeah.
I think we'd get rid of those three and add, add, uh.
Just other.
Add, um, public comment.
Um, do you wanna call this other or?
You still want other business, 'cause we still use that, right, yeah?
Take out D, yeah, take out D E and F and just put in other business and public comment. Non-case related public comment.
Yep.
Public comment has.
Yeah, and I would put in parentheses, non-case related.
I don't know if this is the place to, uh, this is kind of, some boards treat this as a preference thing, but, um, in the past, we've taken, uh, public hearings have been on the agenda first, and then we put our conceptual and design reviews at the end. Sometimes I've seen, and I guess it's a personal preference of mine, that I think those conceptual and design reviews tend to, not always, but they can be quicker, because there is a non-binding aspect, we don't need to vote on acceptance or approval. Uh, a lot of times those are taken before any public hearings, because they tend to be faster, we're not held up by procedure. But I don't know if, it, and here, it kinda gives us flexibility, right, so we can.
I think.
But going forward, I don't know.
I'll make a quick little comment on that. Um, so I referenced the design review thing, I think it kinda came up kinda recently, and that was not really seen, but I've seen in the past, design reviews, you'll probably notice I actually put it under a hearing this time. And so, in the past, I've found evidence, also, but I found evidence that, uh, that it was, you know, it, it, it had like a case number to it.
Yeah.
So, I threw the dis, because I am notifying of butters, it has a, a case feel to it. It almost lives in between that conceptual and actual hearing, so. That's why I put it on, today it's on the hearing, but you, I can put it somewhere else.
No, I think that's fine, I think just, I, I guess, my preference is, I think when we get conceptual or design reviews, I mean, you get sometimes to get through three of those before it takes you to go through a public hearing process on a subdivision.
Yeah.
That it's almost like you would, your public hearings, if you have a design review or concept, those could go before a full application, public hearing or something like that. But that's, I think, that's more, we can structure that, we can as a board, I don't think we have to change this, but as a board, we can choose to structure our agendas that way.
Yeah, I think we can, but, but I'll, I'll toss, I'll toss that coin the other way, and part of me thinks the, you know, the cases that come before us, sometimes they're continued cases, and so we might be hearing a continued case where there's also additional, um, conceptual cases. And so, the cases kind of, to me, those, those have some deadlines to them and some timelines, and they often can have public comment and stuff, so, I mean, to me, like, the applicant has come before us with a case, they've got all the, the information and stuff, and, you know, they're not a conceptual. And so, to me, they should take a priority over a conceptual. Um, I know that we've tossed it around a couple of times, but, you know, I don't know, that's kind of.
Well, no, I, I agree, I think we should take it a case by case and agenda by agenda, I don't mean.
Well, and that's why I think I too, is if you keep it all under here, I mean, we've done that in the past, where we've had all new applica, public hearing applications, but also new concepts, and there's nothing that says the chair, whoever's running the meeting can't move that on agenda, so.
I was thinking specifically of the, the statutory deadlines.
What the case is, how, where it's at, and, you know, a lot of things play into that.
Right, and that's why I don't think it requires any changes here, I just think it's something for us to consider for our agendas when we build those, so.
So, when I am making the agenda, uh, do we want, so, I've recently, like I said, did the changes of design reviews here and, and then still keeping the conceptual as other? Do we want, like, do we wanna go back to having a design review and conceptual as other? Do we wanna do design review as a hearing? My, my theory on that is because you do send notices out to a butter, so there's added levels of importance, so there may be people here. So, that was my theory, I'm putting them under a hearing.
Yeah, no, I think that's correct, and it's, I don't think, I don't think there's any.
And then conceptual and other.
Yeah.
And there's nothing to say that we can't move the conceptual in the agenda at any time if we want.
Or that we meant to hear it.
Well, I mean, anybody in the board can make a motion too to amend the agenda.
In my, in my opinion, conceptual are at our will, in a way. There's, to my knowledge, there's no statutory deadline on a conceptual, voluntary on the applicant's part, um, they're non-binding. So, we, in general, I think, makes sense that we, the stuff that has a timeline, does have maybe a butters in the room, all that kinda stuff, versus the stuff, you know, that we would, we would address that first, and then as time elots, we address the conceptual and.
Conceptual's a one and done.
Yep.
Come in, boom, that's it, you get one shot, there's no continuation. On a design review, you can't continue.
You get three, you continue with this, ninety days, yeah.
If that helps.
Yeah, I think that's maybe a, another area to, as we talk about the agenda, I don't wanna get too far off before we get through this, 'cause I know we wanna get through it, but, um, you know, maybe, I see some other towns adding some additional language in, on the agendas of, of, uh, it's like, it talks about what basically may happen at that meeting, so it's, if it's a new application, it's for possible acceptance and possibly acting on, on completeness and, and something like that. So, it lets people know that not only the board may accept the application that night, we may approve it that night. But I think that's, but, let's save that for, for later.
Gonna make the agendas a little longer.
Conflict of interest, I think that comes from the RSA. Pretty straightforward.
For conflict?
Conflict of interest, uh.
Yep.
Um, part C. Himself, herself, becomes themselves.
You wanna know a little tidbit, Gary? You know, in the RSAs, the town clerk is considered he and him? Share that with Laurie.
I'll, I'll share that.
Our RSAs need a little updating.
That'll.
That would take a nap in Congress.
Sparks some conversation.
Sparks some conversation.
Okay.
I was up to that.
Section three, section four.
Section three. The line that says, except that no issue is to be considered passed or receives less than three affirmative votes, it should be fewer, not less. Receives fewer than. Fewer is the word you use with numbers, less is quantity.
Oh my crap, what's that?
Sorry.
Thank you, teacher.
And then next line, his, her vote becomes their vote. Section four, are we there?
Yeah, I'm, I'm through with my edits.
Section four, planning board in caps. Third line, may participate with the board in caps. The last sentence, at all times, the chairperson. Be consistent. At all times, the chairperson. In caps.
Chairperson in cap.
Yes, because it has been throughout.
If you want to scroll up to, you could capitalize chair, if, go up, uh, keep going up one, um, second line, towards the right, have not been appointed by the chair.
Article, so now we're on Article eleven, rules of procedure, I didn't have any edits through here.
Who's the designated agent? Section one, it'll be presented to the board's designated agent.
I think that's up to us.
And that could be a floating.
Yep.
Our designated agent right now is the land use clerk.
Yeah, or the land use clerk, or.
Town administrator, or whoever's been.
Yep.
Yeah. Section two, all parties, like to add, including of butters. At least it states that this would include these parties included. And I'm going to move on to section three.
Mm-hmm.
F, this is she, he, and we change to they are. They are a party. Oh yeah, in the, thank you, or his name, also in that, state their name. C, the letter I, those nee, those neither in favor nor in opposition. So strike out or not, nor. Now to section four, B. Within five business days, five as a number in parentheses, add a five, the word, so it's five the word, five the number in parentheses following. Opposite in section five, A, where it says to public inspection within five, F I V E, and then put the five within parentheses.
So in that section, I just realized rereading that, so we, we give allowance for the applicant to speak, and their agents, uh, those in opposition on the proposal are allowed to speak, those not, neither in favor, so if you're not in favor nor opposed to it, you could speak. But, but it's unsafe. Are we excluding people that are in favor from speaking on a, the application?
It's in G, and those appearing in favor of the proposal shall be allowed to speak.
Okay, got it, sorry, I.
Yeah, I just kind of.
Re-pass it, okay, got it, we're good. Alright, section.
Let me see, section five, T. Cross out conservation commission, we don't need to have a, a copy of the minutes online.
And, between planning board member, and alternate planning board member?
Yeah, and.
Before alternate?
Yes, pick up comma. Section six, capital A, chairpersons, add an S.
Oh, hang on, go back to, um, five B, um, did we want to also include, will be posted at, at the town of Nottingham Municipal Offices and the website, do we want to add in website?
Did you get last year?
And broadcast to the web.
And broadcast to worldwide.
Yeah.
On the town website, yeah.
Yeah. Section six.
So I have the section six and seven.
Seven, so Article twelve, adoption and amendment.
Okay, all of these bylaws and rules of procedure should be in quotes or italics. There's like two in section one, and that's two in section two. I prefer italics, but doesn't matter, quotes is fine.
You mean, like the terms, bylaws and rules of procedure?
Yes, and bylaws should be hyphenated, capital B Y hyphen, capital L A W S.
And why is that two?
Because that's the title of.
Title of the.
Got it. Right on the front page.
Yeah, got it.
Oh yeah.
And actually, it, it continues with the transaction of business.
Don't forget to capitalize that L, so is it capital L or no?
This is where the six seventy-six one RSA came up that I threw in as authority to the beginning, so do we want, do we want to move this, make this Article one, change it to authority, adoption and amendment, and include it with that other language that's already at the very beginning of our document?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Is this the last one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, it is, I do appreciate everybody's patience on this, we've kind of punted on this for a while. I, I think we've just been punting at the entire town a bit here.
Can I, can I throw in another one?
Wait a minute, I just want to make sure Kevin's keeping up.
Yeah.
I think I'm here, but, so, again, I have a feeling that, uh, Ed's probably going to have to realign some of where the sections go, so, if that's okay.
Mm-hmm.
Because I, I go.
That's fine.
We could start by moving this though.
Yeah, that was my curveball for tonight, was to just kind of chop it all up and cut it up and actually paste it into different spots.
But I think he missed you adding here.
Moving. So what I was, I'm sorry, so what I was saying for this section, Kevin, so this whole, what's, what's currently Article twelve?
Yes.
Adoption amendment, I'm saying,
Move those sections.
we're going to take this whole section and incorporate it into what we've now created as Article one, and we prename it Authority, Adoption and Amendment.
So that'll go up here.
With all that stuff.
With all that stuff.
So this be a section one, or that be a section two?
I think that would be, um.
No, it's all the same thing.
I think.
It'll just work.
Yeah.
I think that would be section one.
Yeah, this is, no, yeah, you're right.
Section two.
And then add other.
The other, renumber the ones from section tw, Article twelve.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, I just see something here, I'm looking, I'm, I was thinking I was lost when I did this. So in section five, on E, each board member involved in joint public hearing makes its own decision, shouldn't that be their own decision? Where are we again, where are we, um, section six.
Six.
Six, alright. Article five.
Article fa, uh, uh, Article, Article eleven, section, section six.
Article five.
Oh my god.
I think it's for the board to not.
Yeah.
Is that, yeah, I, I wonder if I get confused.
Yeah, oh yeah. Oh yeah.
This is what we've been putting off for years.
We've only noticed once a year.
Thank you.
Sometimes I feel like a hit sometimes, but.
Can you find that on there, Kevin?
I, I wasn't, I, I.
Kevin's just going to sit back.
I'm in the section, I didn't, where, so section six of ele, eleven, six.
E.
E.
Eleven six.
E.
E?
She's referring to its.
Oh.
E, each board, each board involved in joint public hearings. Oh, the board, the board is a hit, but I've been thinking that was a board member, sorry.
Yeah, right, so. It's the board.
That's okay.
Board is its.
Yeah.
The board is a hit. But hopefully we never as I.
I'm not down with this sort of thing.
Yeah, no, I guess so.
Kevin, you know that, um, section we were working on, that, that Ed wants you to move up?
Article twelve, right here, yeah.
Section three.
No.
So we don't have a duplicate word in that sentence, change states to denotes. Statement shall be provided that denotes date amended.
And then, should you also change that with section four, listing shall be provided that denotes date amended?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is there a reason, you're aware, Blair, that, that we should be keeping our date amended on, on all these instead of, like, can we, we could, so basically at our next meeting, could we, could we say we are voting out the current bylaws and voting in new bylaws? At that point, those are created new, so it'd be a, a new set of bylaws?
Because don't we have a list on our cover sheet that has like.
Twenty list of dates.
I, I've never searched myself, but.
I've also seen it.
I didn't do it.
I've seen it differently, I've seen like we do, we count, we have like a list of all the times that like we adopted new stuff, but then I see towns update it, where they just put when it was initiated, like in the seventies or whatever, and then whatever the current date that they published on, which is a lot cleaner than.
Although I think the point of the amendment is so you know when it was last looked at.
It's fine, I mean, we could.
Yeah, having it was current one is the most important, but, so like, in town meetings, which we only have once a year, if you really, you don't need to keep running time, whereas like, when I was the city council, I could change five times in a year. Somebody that's doing research, just doing research, when that actually happened, like want to know the different dates of the year that it might have happened.
We'll just leave it for now.
You know, so I don't know that it's necessary here, because that's what you know what you really learn from that. Like what you, what information you're getting.
Well, that's the thing, who cares what, what they approved in eighty-two at this point, it's in the ordinance, so.
Well, some people might want to go back to see if there was an actual, like, some kind of error or something like that, to actually see what the language was on the town meeting or, you know, whatever.
Yeah, we could.
Like copy and paste it off or something, you know.
Feel like finding the copies of some of that stuff too.
We can just, we can just keep it, unless someone.
I just, I, I, well, while they think about it, because eventually we're going to get, that list is going to get so long, and the cover sheets of these documents that.
It usually is.
It's, it's unnecessary, I mean, there's, there's records elsewhere, other than this doc.
Yeah.
Right, there's records of what, of what changes are made.
Yeah, so I'm saying, if we want to make it clear, we could say, at whatever meeting we go to adopt these, we vote out the current bylaws and vote in our new bylaws, which would then.
I mean, it would be really nice to not, I mean, Jesus, I didn't realize that many.
Yeah, it's a.
We have about twenty different amendments on the cover.
And I didn't cover this.
And do, that makes more sense on that, than, than zoning ordinance and this. So we can, we can discuss that at the next meeting.
Can we put the amended date on the cover so we know?
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I think we should.
On the cover?
The current, the most current.
What the amended date is, because.
Like, like we do for zoning ordinance.
Yeah, because like zoning, yeah. But the, for the last section, the authorization.
Yep.
Um, there's a he, she in, he, she has, that gets changed to they have.
I'm sorry, so what was that?
Back down to twelve.
The, the very last page where.
Article thirteen.
Twelve.
That one.
I don't know.
Oh, there we go.
Second line, he, she has, becomes they have. And the regulations and ordinances are in caps, but I don't know of anything that we have that's called regulation and ordinances. So I suggest that we strike that, and we invite Nottingham zoning ordinance and supporting documents.
Subdivision.
Yeah, but that would be the supporting documents.
Oh.
What we have, state plan regulations, subdivision regulations, zoning ordinance.
Insect, insect. But zoning ordinance is the most important one, and that should be named here.
But tech, uh, technically, the select board can, can also enact ordinances in town that could affect uh, policies and land development.
Yeah.
Because you can have.
So that's supporting document, right?
Yeah, I think it's fine the way it is, but if we want to change it, so.
And so you probably, just for consistency sa, safe, take the parentheses away, or, or, around the bylaws and rules of procedures and italicize it. Just for consistency. Right, Sue?
I didn't hear you.
No.
Lost the effect.
No, no, I, I.
For the, for the bylaws, they're in parentheses, change it to italics, because that's what we're doing on the other.
Oh, alright, okay.
Yeah.
I listened, I didn't notice that.
And then you can add the date there.
We got this last August or not?
No.
No.
Okay, so we have no adoption date?
No.
The last time was, was beginning of the pandemic.
May.
Twenty twenty. Yep.
And Kevin, we also need, when everything's all well and done, we need pagination, too.
What was that?
We need page numbers.
Oh, page numbers, yeah.
What was the term you used?
Pageation.
Yeah, there's, there's something I learned.
There's a quiz tomorrow.
So, so what I will do is work with Kevin and, uh, Land Use Clerk and get the, um,
I'll get through.
Get the edits done and then shuffle around. Where I, where I think, we'll do it two ways, we'll keep it kind of current order with the changes we made tonight, and then, well, I'm suggesting we reorder it as, and after we get that, we could send that out to everybody, and we can, um, vote on which version we prefer for, for the next meeting, and if there's any additional changes, we can make them at that, at that meeting, but we'll make sure this is on the agenda for, for first April meeting. So, we'll quickly go around the room, uh, for select, for staff updates, so I'll start with, uh, start with you.
Okay, because I got something.
Yep.
Um, so at the last meeting, we talked about, um, you know, the New Hampshire DOT is working on their ten-year plan, um, and we talked about like Route four, um, and you had, uh, chair had asked me to put together kind of a letter that we would send to the Board of Selectmen, but before I did that letter, I wa, I reached out to Colin at the, um, uh, regional planning, because he's the transportation guy there, um, and said, you know, based on the development that we're seeing and stuff, we've got some concerns with multiple intersections along Route four, you know, um, did he have like suggestions as far as how we want to do it, and so he, he, um, he emailed me back and he said, I had emailed him, and he said, um, he said if there's several intersections that we're, we're concerned about, um, it may need a corridor study, um, and that right now, um, he said it would be best to organize some collaboration and shared concerns for the corridor with Lee, Barrington and Northwood, um, because they also have concerns of Route four and for kind of DOT to, um, pay attention to it, um, and he did say that right now there's funding for corridor studies, so my thought is, is that what we do um, with a letter to the Board of Selectmen, is that we ask them to, um, for the, for a corridor study on Route four, and that they, you know, I don't know if we reach out to those towns, or if they reach out to those towns, um, and then he also said he'd be happy to help us with, uh, the, um, uh, Route one fifty-two, one fifty-six in, in regards to the, what's in our, um, master plan for the bicycle lanes, and reducing that, so he'd be happy to help us if we're needing that as well, so, um, so my thought is, kind of put the letter to the Selectmen. So, um, so my thought is, kind of put the letter to the Selectmen requesting the, the, kind of what he's, he's alluding to with Route four with proposing a corridor study and also talk, uh, you know, opening up communication with the other towns in regards to some of our concerns based on what we're seeing for impact as far as traffic. So if you want me to write that up, I'll draft that up.
Yeah, so, so what Ms. Anderson's alluding to is, at the last meeting, we kind of had some brief discussion as to what we might have on the agenda, or, or as we were doing board updates, and one was the ten-year plan that's coming up for DOT, and that there's a comment period that they're looking for, by May thirty-first, I believe it was, was the deadline.
Yeah.
So we talked about getting together what items we've identified as a board, uh, for our town and, and areas, and then send that on to the select board, you know, we had some things that came out of our, uh, one of our prior subcommittees, Transportation Subcommittee, that, those items are still valid, which was the bike lanes on, on one fifty-two, one fifty-six, basically widening the shoulder, repainting the lines, um, and a few other items, which was Route four, the Smoke Street intersection, possibly the one fifty-two intersection, and then, um, the discussion of some of the other items, because the, uh, the one fifty-six intersection with one fifty-two is on the ten-year plan for, it's very end of the ten-year plan, I think it's a placeholder to make that a right angle.
Unless it gets pushed.
But that's one of the items that'll probably get pushed as, as they do projects, so. Um, I'd ask Ms. Anderson to just draft up the list that, that we discussed and we get that to the select board.
I'd get that to the select board.
I do wonder, you had a good point of, do we ask the select board to reach out to those towns? Or do they essentially ask if they authorize us to make that communication? Because if we're gonna be the ones communicating with SRPC, eh, we're just making them like a middleman?
Yeah, that's true.
And the select board has plenty to deal with.
Yeah, that's true.
The benefit there is, I don't know, does Northwood have a planner, or do you guys contract for Northwood? Lee and Barrington have planners.
Yeah, I don't know.
So like, there, that's an easy point.
But it might be just, you could start with an email again.
Yeah.
Ask.
Because I know Nor- I don't think Northwood has a planner, but Lee and Barrington have town planners, so they have a full-time s- person that could absorb that request, um.
That's a great place to start, too.
Yeah.
I think we always try to be respectful of, I think we're, we're a very respectful board, we always try to make sure we're not step on toes, but sometimes you're right, you know, are we unnecessarily being overly respectful and when we could take a, take it and run with it at this point?
I mean, it's fine to ask, I think, but yeah, I think this is like, or otherwise, we're just gonna be feeding information through them, but I, I, which I think is fine, but.
Well, I think we should ask for a blessing.
Yeah, exactly, and I, I think they're happy to.
Who's the local representative? Solely the community representative since.
What's that?
Isn't that the transportation? Collaboration?
Excellent question.
I don't, maybe the, maybe the building inspector, I don't know. I don't think so.
I'll find that.
Okay, all right, so, yeah, if, if, if you've got the lists, if you wanna.
Yep.
Create some, gonna draft form of that, we may am doing two separate, you know, doing one that we sent to the select board and one that we're sending to the other two towns, um, to let them know that we're interested in having that type of study done. I think it does fall under the purview of the planning board in our, what we're allowed to do, so.
Yep, okay.
Well, that might also be something to bring up at an SRP.
Meeting, that's a good idea. Yeah.
Right, because those people, at least reps will be there.
Right, right.
So that's, yeah.
Cool, all right, the block out.
Ms. Allen, did you have anything you wanna?
No, I've got everything out. Just be saving up. Um, a couple of quick things, um, the medallions for scenic roads are being worked on. K- R. Kelly is working with Kelly at Sundance Sign, and Sundance Sign is gonna redo the artwork on, on the Minuteman to make it sharper, and that's gonna benefit not only this project, but certainly projects down the line out of Nottingham. I also reached out to, um, Durham, the town manager there, town administrator, town administrator.
Yep.
Or manager, and he sent me a PDF of their aquifer overlay district and the verbiage in there for using less salt in areas of aquifers, so that's something we can consider possibly putting out and including in our, um, aquifer overlay district, um, next year. Start anyway.
And I did follow up with the town administrator, I had a, a bullet list of items to, uh, I promised I'd follow up with last week, and, uh, held on that, to just kind of give them an idea, uh, uh, as to what we may be working on or some items we're, we're reconsidering for this year. One was looking at incorporating some kind of language about, um, you know, road salts and things like that, since it can impact, negatively impact aquifers and wells, and that we do see it in surrounding communities, um, and then working with the DOT as part of the ten-year plan. With that as well, and, and, um, just opened the conversation with him as to, uh, obviously, at the last meeting, I was pointing at Chair as well, so just to make sure I had that communication with him and, and everything, so. That's all I have for tonight.
Nothing for me.
Uh, just wanted to share what, uh, Colin had sent as an update from the last policy meeting. That SRPC had somebody, Jeff McDonald, um, do a presentation, uh, about, uh, community transportation. There's a, a link if anybody wanted to look at it, communiterrides.org. And the other subject touched on was, uh, EV charging, which I guess is, uh, EDS tack meeting coming up. That, that'll be, uh, discussed in further details.
Yeah, they're gonna start to identify possible EV charging, you know, areas. I, I don't know if it's, uh, on the state roads or, 'cause, you know, I don't know, 'cause they're looking like if there's ones that we might want to have in town to put on there.
Yeah, I know that they s- uh, from what I remember, they had started out like, uh, at the, the interstates.
Yeah.
Some of those rest stops.
Right.
But, um, and I know there are some in like, uh, New Market, uh, places, yeah, places, certain places.
Yeah, Rochester hasn't been though.
Yeah, for Home Depot Plaza. Some, some communities actually have a requirement now for certain commercial projects to incorporate them.
Do you know, are they still funding that through, I think a lot of the prior ones are funded through, I think it was the Volkswagen settlement.
Yes, that's where it was coming from. Yeah. Yeah. Or the tobacco, one or the other, I don't know.
Few different settlements.
Yeah.
All they got.
Mr. Davis, silence is golden. I think you, uh, I have to go back and look and see, uh, when your term is up and, uh, to be reappointed, so, uh.
I was wondering if it was this year or not.
We will hundred percent confirm on that one before the next meeting, uh, and if it is, then we'll make sure to address that at the next meeting, too. And, uh, Ms. Jones?
Thank you for electing me last time as an alternate, and I've got my house sworn in, and, um, spent a week trying to get acquainted with what's going on.
You ask good questions, I, so thank you. Dove right in.
Blair?
I was familiar with EV stations and so, but the, um, the new funding is available as part of the infrastructure plan.
Okay.
So that's why there is a lot of funding, um, it's part of the conversation in our office. Who's out there developing like new practices for, for communities that want to do it, that want to implement like, what is that?
Yeah.
So I can't say anything as firmly, but I'm just saying that there are, or like kind of collection, collecting money. If that will be some.
Um, Blair, last, I think, I think it was last meeting I mentioned, um, I've been doing some reading on the governor's Invest in H Plan, the hundred million dollar Invest in H Plan. I don't know if you've heard about that. It, it's, it's a plan, they're trying to figure out how to fund it now, but, um, I didn't know if you'd see anything come through SRPC because a component of it actually deals with, it's like ten or fifteen million set aside to help municipalities modify their ordinances specific to workforce housing. It's kind of the, the goal of the plan is to increase affordable housing opportunities. I mean, right now, it's, uh, there's not a ton of details, I believe, out there, but he's, we're doing, he's doing the press tour right now and trying to figure out how to fund it, but would have a huge impact in terms of affordable housing, and I know here in town, there's, well, really, this whole region needs affordable housing, but. Might be something to keep an eye on, and if it becomes a real thing, it'll, I'll be, I'll be curious to see how, uh.
So Invest in H, Invest in Housing?
It's, he calls his plan Invest in H, if you Google it, you'll see Sununu's Invest in H, it's a hundred million dollar package, and it's broken out into different planned numbers, but.
With the other part, the EV stations part, is that funds available to like private business owners that say it's, and it's, it's, it's existing service station, like a gasoline service station, is, is there, I wonder if that's funds at all available to, like, them to add in that additional infrastructure, anything like that?
Or I was thinking like the town hall and the school and stuff like that, you know?
I mean, maybe.
Yeah, I don't know yet.
I don't know why, well, completely, what happened. Their property, but, I mean, I guess, like, it was free.
Yeah.
You know, maybe they would.
Well, I'm thinking it's more of the ones that have restaurants or, you know, community stores and.
Yeah, yeah.
Food services, so.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing, like the Cubbies and stuff like that, uh, perhaps, um, I, I don't know yet, but that, that part.
You're in the right place. In Maine, there's actually companies that, I deal with it now, there's private companies putting in chargers. I don't know how the numbers work on that, but.
There's a boatload of them at the, um, Cannon Bunk Rest Area.
Yep, yep.
A lot there.
The Tesla Superchargers.
Yeah.
Kevin, did you have, uh, anything for us?
Uh, my main thing is I have a couple of mylaws that need to be signed.
Thanks for the reminder on that, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll take one mylaw and then another set of plans for the, set of plans for mylaws for Bevins. And then I did talk to the fire chief for what they about slowing down the number of, uh, plans, and he said he only needs one set of plans, and we can hold here, so I said, okay, fair enough. So I know that there was that, in some way, that maybe exists somewhere in some of our rights.
It's in us, I think it's in our subdivision, right?
Something, which we will dive into a little bit more, but I was, that's, I think that was a big impact, I don't know.
And that's something we could just waive, right? We could just like add, uh, an approval process and waive or something like that, or?
Most likely, yeah, and, and obviously, we, we do have a plan to potentially add some changes, amendments to the, uh, subregs this year, anyway. One was the roadway setbacks.
Right.
Um, things like that, so that would be one area where, you know, we could do it all at once through a public hearing, I believe, so.
And that's it for me, so I will set these up, and on your way out, if you couldn't sign, I'm gonna put this, it'd be three, so one will be for one Kubota and then two, uh, for the Bevins, one's gonna be a mylaw and one will be a favor.
All right, and, uh, before we adjourn, I do appreciate everybody sitting with us as we got through the bylaws. Like I said, we've, we've planned to do an overhaul on those for a few years now, uh, so we actually made the time to do it tonight, so thank you, everybody. And at that, uh, entertaining motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you, everybody.